Relegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state of God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. I'd ask you to silence your cell phone if you've not done that already. Public comment on any subject not listed on the agenda? I don't have anything for public comment. Approve the minutes of the June 17th, June 24th, and July 5th meeting. You've got a copy of those in front of you?
I move to approve the three sets of minutes.
A motion by Richard to approve all three sets of minutes?
I second the motion.
Carol, the second of that motion. Any other discussion?
I'll stay on the June 17th.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All at the same time? Motion carries. Financial report?
We're slowly getting caught up and then I gave all copies of sales tax stuff and then people over here pulled my stuff.
We got one in our package. You want one of these?
It is, well, your packet is from ancient, so. Yeah, this is the current one.
You can get that one too. I've been to my country.
Okay, well, anyway, it continues to be. I don't know if we told y'all that the auditor has said that we will, she will present the audit at the August meeting, next meeting. So hopefully, we're gonna start getting caught up all over.
And then she'll be back in December.
So we'll be doing three audits in fifteen months.
That's good. Bless your heart.
That's good.
You didn't have one for two years. You say we're gonna have one in August and the next meeting we'll have an audit report?
That's our plan.
Well, yeah.
I'll touch base with her.
All right, any questions, anything else? For those here, JJ. Okay, I remember six is a public hearing regarding the structure on the property commonly known as 207 West Patterson being considered as a dangerous building pursuant to Chapter 5, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances. That public hearing is open as of 6:05. What are the public hearings? Anybody here to thought about that? Okay, what, Toby?
Well, I was just gonna say, Commissioner, this is a property that we had talked about last month. This is a property that Terry's been working for quite a while. He began working this my first year here in 2019. He has been trying to find any person that is tied to this property, but as you can see from our initial report, which I think you know on the second page here, legal owner of the property passed away in April of 2019. From all the searching that Terry's done working this property, we have not been able to find a legal heir tied to this property. We did find somebody that is supposedly family. This is a gentleman that lives in Oregon or Washington State. He is a professor up there and speaking with him on the phone and by mail, he has no way to prove he has any legal right to this. He doesn't even wanna be involved with it. He has his own life. He doesn't wanna have anything to do with it. So with that, we started working on, working it for possible condemnation by visiting with city attorney, getting the process down. So we do everything by the book to make sure that we've given every opportunity for anybody involved to get involved with this. Terry and I got with the judge, Pam Chaney, got an administrative search warrant from her on the 3rd of July, yeah, 3rd of July. And we went to go serve the warrant on the property to get proof. That gives us the right to enter to this, enter the structure itself. So with that, we took a bunch of pictures. If you remember, we started looking through the pictures. One of the things that we found is there's a person that we think we know who it is that is using the property and parking his vehicles in the garage. Somebody that lives in another property. And if you go back to picture, you can see that up there at the top, you may notice that he's even installed a digital ring camera. And I don't know how it's powered, but he has it up there overlooking the cars to try and dissuade anybody from messing with it. I think we have another picture.
At the end, there's a better photo of it.
But as you can see from these pictures, the many different ways that this structure violates the dangerous building code. We have windows that were completely removed. We have the roof, which was completely removed by people that didn't have a legal right to be on the property. So with the removal of the metal roof, water and weather and all kinds of manner of living creatures have been in and out of there, as well as with the windows and the doors removed. You can see the floors are tore up in the structure. There's a bathroom there on the right. It's complete. I think the sink up there on the wall is barely holding on. It's still left in the building. Electrical system is damaged and in its subpar. I don't think even if somebody went out there, uncle would even think about placing power back out there, even with the service, the service is substandard. There's no mechanical system in there to provide heating. You can see the floors are all tore up, the ceiling. This is the back wall. It's bowed out. It's pulled away there. More pictures of the back wall. You can see from those tiles, it's bowed out, coming out there.
The roof on the picture on the right, you can see where the roof is about to fall in.
Yeah. So this is the area that's on the east side of the structure. We noticed that for some reason, this one room was completely sealed. And it was sealed with fiber board that was falling apart anyway. We pushed on the, on the board and it just fell right in, but somebody's using it as their personal storage space. Some of those are windows and doors we think might be from this place, but a lot of them, there's more there than come from this property. So somebody else is using it as their private storage area.
We don't know who?
We don't know who for sure. We have an idea. The same person is putting the cars there.
But we have no proof yet.
Do we know who the car belonged to?
The car belongs to a gentleman that lives around the corner.
On Lamar Street.
On Lamar Street. And there have been other vehicles there that we haven't been able to verify who they belong to because the VIN numbers are covered up and there's no plate on. You can see the electrical service right there. It's an old 60 amp service that's falling apart there. So there's multiple ways that this violates our dangerous building structure and no owner.
There's the camera.
Oh, yeah, there's the camera. So I mean, I'm sure that's just a psychological.
Why would you put your multi-thousand dollar car in a structure that looks like?
Well, if the other option is on the street, I guess that's a little better. But the garage is barely, you know, up there anyway. I guess that's better than pulling it into delivery room there. But anyway, on our report there, it's I think the second page of the, oh, no, third page of the handout we gave you. We list all the different ways that this violates the dangerous building code. It violates minimum codes that were set up by the state as well. There's nobody that's there to even try to suggest for them to fix it. And the city's recommendation is to, for y'all to follow, sign the order to sign it as a, for the order to abate the problem, to sign it as a order of demolition, to demolish the building. We feel like with the amount of damage there, that's the cheapest way to get out of this, to just tear the thing down, scrape it clean. And then we'll leave it for, what, I guess, either leave it for the county to try to settle for back taxes? Or if we wanna do similar to how we did with the house, the old manufactured home that was down at the end of Seaman that we tore down? And we sent letters to the taxing entities to get to basically sign it over to us? And then us put it up for bid to try to get the money back for demolition costs.
Whatever it costs us, we'll put a lien against the property and what happens.
Okay, how quickly can we demolish this place?
Well, in the past, we've torn buildings down on our own, but we have a demolition budget of $10,000. And we feel like the best course of action would be to put the property up for bid for demolition. Have a contractor come in, make them responsible to ensure that all the safety things. So if something goes wrong, we're not on the hook for it. At Mineral Wells, many years ago, the city demoed their own buildings until we demoed the wrong house one day. So we wanna make sure that we put this up for bid and let a contractor tear the house down for us.
Okay.
I think we're still a couple of months even from tearing from starting the demolition process.
With the order of demolition that you would approve, we would fill out this form and the button, the day that you sign it officially, we have 30 days that has to elapse. Now, if this was a home or a property that somebody lived at and we wanted to give them a chance to try to save it, you could give them up to 90 days to begin a course of action. But since we don't have that, the minimum we have to give is 30 days. And then after that, then we can get the plan together and put it up for bid, for demolition.
Who notifies the owner of that red Corvette or this other stuff?
We will take it upon ourselves to contact him to let him know. And we will also post the order of demolition on the property. And I think we have to put it in the paper as well. So it's the same notification that we would do in person, on, attached to the structure, and out in paper where everybody can see it.
But we know who the owner of the bed is. We don't know who owns the windows and stuff.
No, but we believe it's the same person and we'll give him the same opportunity to get his items out before it's put.
How long has this property been in this condition?
Since probably 2021, I believe, is when the windows were taken out and the roof was taken off.
Does it always take three years to get to this point?
It shouldn't. But this was, this was kind of our first rodeo and so we took our time with it to make sure we were doing it correctly.
Well, yeah.
So I should.
It was on your own.
In addition to that.
They're getting a demolition.
Well, in addition, we didn't have a line item for demolition in our budget until last year.
That's really good. What deserves me is we've got, we've got a dangerous property and we're not doing anything about it. We've gotta be more proactive and move that process as fast as possible.
Well, with us doing this one, now that we've learned the process and all the steps to take it, to make sure that we don't short anybody an opportunity. There's another structure that we are looking at down in South Seaman to do the same thing. And there are other buildings here in town that we would rather give an order to repair for people to try to save these structures. But we are beginning to take these steps to go after buildings that are in such bad shape here.
Well, I just, we just need to move faster, as fast as we can possibly illegally move. If something were to happen to that property tomorrow, we'd all look like a bunch of idiots for taking that long and putting somebody's life in danger that we shouldn't be doing that. So I just, that's my only comment about that. I appreciate what y'all did and yeah, I'd say it's a dangerous property myself.
Is there a process, I mean, do you go through condemning the property first and then demolition?
Yes, but we, what, this, that's what this process is. So before we can tear it down legally, take, as the city to tear it down, we have to by law go through these steps this hearing, right? And, and give opportunity for anybody that may show up late to the party, that we've given notification everywhere we have to. Just like we have to wait 30 days by law before we can go knock it down because that's what the state says we have to do. Now, so like I said before, if it was somebody that wants to save it, because I've had that happen in my old city. Somebody shows up at the very last minute, hey, it was my grandma's house and I wanna save it. We can give them up to 90 days to begin that process. And then it comes back at, over there, it's a Board Building Standards Commission, but here it will be y'all. Y'all could order in 90 days, you revisit this to see the progress made upon repairs.
I guess what I'm asking is, do you put a sign up on the building itself that says this is property?
That's what, well, it would be this.
Well, now you're talking about the demolition.
But before, every time we've gone out there, we left a copy of the warrant that we, that we used. We left a copy saying, hey, we're gonna be having it before you. And then before that, it was, hey, we're gonna be setting up for this lack of last chance. There are multiple times that warnings have been taken to that property.
Where do we actually approve this? Because it's not in our deal. Okay, I'm gonna ask a question.
We've sent notifications to him. We've ordered him to return back to his assignment. No, but he's, yeah, we've given it to him, no, not because he's not a legal heir. But we've sent notifications to him every time certified, really certified. And then after the first time we talked around. So he's been given an opportunity to do that and he's signed for the certified letters as well. So.
Okay, all I have in front of me right now, I don't make sure. We do this right, obviously, because we've got the public hearing which we're in right now. I've got a piece of paper here that ordered to abate.
Right.
It said description of the building or structure on the property that were, that were the subject of the hearing. That is blank on here.
Right, so what we would do is whatever decision you make, we will mark that down and we will have that all filled out with all the particulars on this. Because there's not enough room in that one section to list all the different ways. So we're gonna attach the report to it. So after you, whatever decision y'all make as a board, we would have that prepared and then have you come and sign it. You will sign nothing tonight until this is all completely filled out.
Well, this is a public hearing. I don't see anything that we can make a decision about this tonight. I don't see something on that agenda that says we can make a decision.
You said it was for the public.
I would take a vote of human action.
Yes, it does. We can't, we can't take action on this tonight. We'll have to bring it before y'all because it's, it is an action item.
I know, that's part of it. Okay. Miss Communication with us playing on our first time, we believe that you were able to make.
Well, we've had the public hearing, so we will probably meet again before next month.
We can do a special call for this issue, yes, sir.
Well, we just add that, we meet again, make sure we add this to that agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or talk about this property at 207 West Patterson, we're in a public meeting? I will close this public meeting at 6:20. And we'll be hanging on to that, we'll do that. The Board of City Commissioners may discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration request by the Ranger in Cisco College for Hotel Motel Tax Event Funds for sponsorship of the annual Ranger Roundup Volleyball Tournament.
Yes, Commissioner, you know, every year, part of our tax to our local hotel motels is we'll go to fund events like this. The esteemed coach from Ranger College has come before us and going to give us a little spill on what we need to do.
A little spill?
A little spill. Just a little.
You put a timer on this or what?
The first one, it gives you a breakdown of the, like, how much, the most expensive thing about hosting the tournament, obviously, is the officials. And you're running to location with running to gyms. Unfortunately, neither us nor Cisco can make it to courts. Cisco actually probably could, but you'd have to push the creatures up in that moment you're seating. So we're, so that's why we came together to do a dual tournament. It gives you a breakdown of the officials, putting up the officials at the hotel, the table workers, which you need a scoreboard, scorebook, a libero checker, and then two line judges. And then programs, hospitality room, and it gives you the breakdown at the bottom of how much it costs for us to host this tournament, which it's very, most people don't like hosting it, but we like jumping into the deep end. And then if you look at our, we do have some teams coming from quite a distance. Our furthest will be Cloud County. I believe it's eight hours for them to come, be coming from Kansas. So we have two Kansas teams, Oklahoma team. Coastal Bend is down in Eagle, about five, I mean, five hours. I mean, so we have some teams coming a pretty good distance. We're excited. We have, if you guys would like to come out, we have the defending Eastfield, which is a DCC school. They're a defending national champion. And we are fortunate to open our season playing the defending national champion. It doesn't matter that they're the Division III program, but we're opening it with them and they turn around the next weekend and come to us. So we're real excited about that and the quality of teams that we have coming in. And I think this is year five that we've done it and I mean, I'm proud that we brought it. I started it with Coach Moore. I think she's the first one, Susan Moore, that is a retired Cisco coach. Then it went to John Stenman and now it's on Renee Crockett, which is my assistant from two years ago, got the head job last year. So we're excited about what we're doing and bringing to the area. I think that obviously the further teams will be coming in and spending two, minimum of two nights. I mean, some will accommodate, we'll probably be taking up both the La Quinta and the Best Western.
So this is the fifth annual?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, how has this been done or received, worked, the history of it? Has it gone pretty well in your opinion, I guess? You're still doing it?
I think so. I mean, we added, we actually added a team this year. We were, we were going to have 10 teams. One team had to drop out. She had a conflict with her schedule. We'll see how it is, just going up to nine, like with the hotels and everything, we want people to be, I mean, we're kind of, I would probably just put them at the two hotels in Eastland. I don't know that I recommend any in Ranger and I don't know that Cisco has great hotels either. So we'll see how that goes. Plus, the Historic Hotel is where we'll put the officials up, like they're great, I mean, like they're great parents, like whether it's us or Cisco, they can use the Eastland Historic Hotel. Like last year, I think we booked that, I mean, pretty full. So I think it's went well. We have a lot of teams wanting to come back and like I said, we're a neutral location right off of 20 and you can eat in Eastland, you can eat in Cisco. And then Ranger is actually getting, we have a Mexican restaurant besides Shooter's. We have, we do have a Mexican restaurant and we're opening another one soon. So, yeah.
Oh, you're right. There, I have to call if you pick that up, $6,010. $3,500 between those schools is splitting the expenses equally. And the staff would recommend that we fund all of that. And I also think that's a good, good plan and great cause and good to a lot of people around our community. So entertain a motion if there's no other questions you may have.
I'll make a motion that we fund the $6,010 for the Ranger Roundup Ranger Wrangler. Is that what it is?
Hard to say, yeah.
Turn it off.
A motion from Shirley.
Richard second.
I second it.
Second, oh, you did? I didn't hear you. Second, a second from Richard to approve the $6,010 for the volleyball tournament. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All at the same time, motion carries.
Coffee Guild was, lost their air conditioner bus last year. I was talking to him a long time.
Hotel motel taxes.
Just for the record, that does come from our Hotel Motel Tax Office, which is what you are supporting by doing this. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Just letting you know, you'll probably, I think our basketballs are gonna be, I bet you they start growing something because we've had so much success. So. I wouldn't be surprised.
Glad to have it. Hope we can help with that as well. Thank you very much. Item number two, discussion consideration of order 24-903 in ordinance of the City of Easton, Texas, ordering an election to be held on November 5th, 2024 in Easton, Texas, for the purpose of voting on proposed charter amendments, providing for matters incidental thereto, and providing an effective date. And you got that and we all know what that is?
Yes. In your packet, the first five pages are basically how they will read on the ballot. And behind that is a copy of the charter and the part of it where they, you can actually see what they struck and what they've added in to each amendment on this. You know, we've kind of talked and talked about this. We're gonna have to kind of carry this torch to the public about this. There is no significant changes in this, you know, we're just kind of cleaning up everything over the past, well, since 97 is the last time we did this. And everything, everybody knows laws have changed and need to be updated. The major change that we, that y'all have asked for is to appoint somebody to the commission when there's a vacancy instead of.
Election.
Election. And that's really about it.
And that was the major and anything else is just a matter of cleaning up what we have and having an opportunity to do that.
Cleaning it up and bringing it to Texas state law.
Yeah, if we approve to do this, I would like for the commission to hang on to this document. So you'll have it for a refresher. If someone doesn't ask you what's going on, why are we doing this, you got a copy and you can show them what it's all about.
Yes, I moved it past ordinance 24-903.
A motion from Richard?
I had a quick comment tonight.
You can make a second.
And then I'll go.
I got a motion from Richard and a second. Carol, any other discussion?
Yes.
Shirley?
I didn't, I didn't think about it before to ask this, but on the appointment of the commissioners, there's a vacancy to fill. Do we put in there the, what we have to, I mean, the requirements to be the same as, like if it was an election, do we have to add that in there? Or do we just do that? You know what I'm saying? We can't just go out and appoint anybody. We'll have to.
They'll have to have the same.
They'll have to. Does that need to be in the charter?
It's in the charter already, what it takes to serve the city.
Yeah, I think it.
That would cover that requirement to be a city commissioner.
Preserving that, yeah. Otherwise, we'd have to send.
We've had to talk about that.
That's a good point.
I would think, yeah, that's a good point. I just think it falls under that same umbrella of to be a commissioner is the requirement and that's what we've got. If we have to appoint, we have to follow the same guidelines. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All at the same time, motion carries. City manager briefing?
City managers briefing, the second phase of the channel cleanout is fixing to, we're finalizing the bid documents. And it's fixing to go up for bids. On Wednesday, we are opening, we are having a bid opening for the drivable water fumes that will be created here in town. We did hold a pre-bid meeting. Had, had somebody show up for that. We did contact a couple of contractors or the engineering did and we anticipate quite a few people bidding on this project. There, there will be a base bid and then there will be the base bid plus four alternates. And with all the alternates on it, we had to cut a couple of streets out. And what the alternates are is, you know, we got a base bid, we think we're gonna hit this and we can add as many to streets as we can to get in that budget. And that's, really, that's all about, knock on wood, we feel confident that we're gonna get a lot done on this.
You have this priority list. How close did you stick to that priority list?
Real close. I have it in my office where we.
Do you know how far down the list you got?
How far down?
Yeah, if it's a priority, you say we've got, if we get more, we've got.
60%.
Is that, are we down to number 17 and the rest of them will be alternates? Or you have all these done and we've got more money maybe? What do you say?
I am saying. I am saying, I'm gonna get this list real quick. They're not in, this list is not in the priority list. But I think.
In priority order?
In priority order, excuse me, yeah. But.
That's what that list is, isn't it?
You're right. You're exactly, you're exactly right, it does. But no, that is not priority.
Y'all may have changed this some.
Yeah. Well, we did, uh, because we added, okay, we were gonna redo Lago Vista, okay? And Rio Vista is down there by the laundromat. And what is the other one back there by the Chevy house? I'm drawing a blank.
Buino Vista.
Buino Vista, there it is. We have added those in there to complete that whole deal. For some reason, Buino Vista and Rio Vista were not in the initial package. And, uh, the engineers and I felt like that we could move more water. It wasn't. We could move more water, and it'd be better serve the community if we could add those in, which means we had to cut a couple of the lesser duty streets.
We talked about that, okay. Glad you caught that.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna have, have the engineers drawn up the specs?
Yes.
So that's all done?
Yes.
So you're having a meeting Wednesday to?
To open bids on this.
What time is it moving?
Two o'clock, I believe.
Two o'clock?
Double check. Okay. Uh, stoplights are out, working. Sorry, lost where I was. We've, have we seen a reduction in accidents?
Yes, reduction in accidents. People are getting used to them.
Yeah.
Have we had complaints?
We have, yes.
Yes, sir, we have.
I wondered. I wondered because.
Crash, we went down, people are upset, it takes a little longer, including my boss, but.
Well, I came in from Abilene today, and we went to track the supply and sat there with that light for.
Yep.
Long enough that I was ready to go around it. I didn't say, turn it on.
Let me tell you, you're coming from the west side, and you're going east, you are thankful for those lights.
Oh, I agree, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, they're, they're all right.
Needed a long time.
They give you a gap to get out when you need to get out, so that's good.
Not as bad as Dallas.
Are you through, sir?
I'm through.
Any other questions for JJ? All right, code compliance.
Commissioners, Terry started June with fifty-three cases, opened twenty-six cases, closed eleven, left us with a total of sixty-eight. Out of all those cases, he opened thirty-seven different violations and closed fourteen violations. And the good part down there, you'll see fines paid for sixty-two dollars, that was from the previous month. That's the, uh, the person that bought the three-story old radio station building back over here, a couple blocks down. He fixed the issue with the bricks that were falling off the top. He sealed up the window. What was open?
That was.
That was too. So he brought that into compliance. And that's it, pretty much for code compliance there. We're still working within code to try to get the software working the way it's supposed to. We, it has been like pulling teeth, and we're ready to, we're, 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 we're still trying to save what we got going. I think we're set up for another meeting for it to walk through and see if it works in September.
We didn't realize that there was an additional thing that we needed to buy to go with their module for them to be able to upload photos and other things.
Let, let, let me rephrase that, because she put it very nicely. What it was is we, we told them what we wanted was to be able to store the copies of photos and everything else on the cloud with the case all together. And when we got started with this, yeah, no problem, we got that and all stuff. And then when it got time for him to start doing this, hey, how come I can't do this? How come I can't do that? Like, we said, oh, that's from another module.
Well, they say that the content manager was on their, some of their proposed stuff.
Really good, sir.
But I.
What did, what did that cost? What did that cost us?
Seven thousand?
I don't think it's quite seven.
But it can be used across.
For the whole office.
Everybody, board can use it, utilities can use it, anybody that can get into encode can use it to upload documentation or whatever. So it's, 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 it gives us an opportunity to give more, you know, options of saving, documents, photos, orders, videos, everything for everybody that uses encode. So it is beneficial, but this is something that we thought we were getting to parties. So it's, it's been very frustrating. Yeah, say please.
All right, what else for coding portion? Thank y'all. About everything else. Who's next? Police. Chief Pitt.
Yes, question. For the month of June, the police department answered four hundred and nineteen calls for service. We arrested eighteen people, seventy-one reports were generated. We had twenty-seven agency assists, five hundred and ninety-two business checks were done. We worked eighteen crashes, fourteen domestic disturbances. We filed eighteen cases with the district attorney's office with zero juvenile cases in June. Traffic enforcement, the guys wrote a hundred and forty-two citations, two hundred and forty-nine warnings, for a total of three hundred and ninety-one traffic contacts. Animal control, she answered a hundred and thirteen calls for service, six citations issued, four warnings. Looks like she impounded sixteen animals, adopted out one, and we had two quarantines. Noble arrest, we had five narcotics arrests that month, five arrests on felony warrants, four sexual assaults, or assault cases were worked, four arrests for driving while intoxicated. We also have a state step program that's been put in place for our guys to work extra. And TechStop says our crashes were on the uptick a little bit, so our guys are gonna be out working extra, paid for through the state on that step program to reduce those crashes a little more.
Where is that area?
Sir?
Where is that area from TechStop? What is that about?
Uh, just this inside the city limits completely, it's a total.
Like on our main highway, street there?
I think probably a lot were out there. The lights are gonna curb some of that, but that program's a good program, and as we get to, we get to have our people out a little extra, and we don't have to, because the state's paid for that, so.
Yeah, what does it stand for?
What?
Step.
Step. It's just, that's what the state calls any program they do that they pay for. It's like a grant.
Not an acronym?
It's a state step program.
Let me ask the question here about your number, and I'm just curious for you to, when I see the top line says total calls for service, four hundred and nineteen.
Yes, sir.
That's the most so far this year. What is total calls for service? As I look down through this page, your traffic is all down, but yet total calls for service are up.
Yes.
So what, is, is traffic not even part of that number?
No, total calls for services, any call that we get across the board is kept up with. And that's the total number of calls that our officers responded to in some way or another, whether it's a traffic crash, or if it's a, a marking dog, or somebody's grass blowing or whatever, every call.
Traffic enforcement would not be part of that, because you're not getting calls.
Enforcement is different, and when you see the traffic enforcement down a little bit, then you look up and you see seventy-one incidents that we had to make reports on, those are actually calls that our officers had to go and make a report that gets turned in the other department.
Good job. Any other questions for Chief Pitt? Thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it. Chief, what do you?
Good evening. June, we saw a pretty significant spike in, uh, calls for service. So we, we had a hundred and four calls. It's probably the busiest month since I've been here. It's, uh, kept us running. That, that ended up in almost three and a half runs a day coming out of our house. Seventy-seven of those events took place in the city, with twenty-four outside the city limits, and three mutual aid, uh, assist to our neighbors, two in Ranger and one in Carbon. We did install a smoke detector this month, and I've got a misprint on those incidences between ten and seven, because it was a lot higher than that. It's probably thirty-two or twenty-two, uh, on, on that. That's disappointing, but it was, uh, good, I wanted that statistic there. We did a ten-three working structure fires this month. One was in the city limits, two of them were in Ranger. The third mutual aid call, there was one that we were dispatched to in Carbon, and we were just canceled in route. Three grass fires, which we look to see this number increasing if the environment doesn't change. One vehicle fire, fifty-four runs, we went to assist the EMS, uh, with a medical emergency. Thirteen motor vehicle accidents, two public assists. That number is probably a misprint also. We had zero false alarms, one investigation, one rescue, two hazmats, and we got no applications or memberships this month.
Did you say what the rescue was?
Yeah, it was an auto extrication, so, so if you count those up without the, if you, the misprints weren't there, they would probably total a hundred and five calls, because it was an extrication on one of the motor vehicle accidents.
Okay.
So we had three members that attended the Texas A&amp;M Municipal Fire School that was paid for for, uh, reimbursement, the Texas Forestry Grant. We had two attend the, uh, one thirty-one ninety basic wildland firefighting certification class, and then one of our members attended the, uh, live fire training instructor, which is gonna be to support our future Fire Academy coming. So with our EMT school officially started today with nineteen students, nine are representing the Eastland Fire Department. And we still are, we are having challenges in filling our vacancy. We've had a vacancy since April thirtieth. We've interviewed five, and, uh, we're, we're still having some challenges filling that vacancy, so. Hopefully, when we get our EMT school completed and our Fire Academy completed, we'll be able, we, we will eliminate or reduce these challenges as we're certifying our own. Right now, we're a little ways out, so. We're, uh, city manager and I are getting, trying to get creative here, but we have no applicants in the pool, and.
How many named firemen do we have?
Three.
Only three?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that include you, or?
Oh, that includes me, and that does not include me, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm the fourth administrator. We have three staff firefighters.
And there's how many shifts?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, it's a three-shift platoon. One per day, so our other two firefighters are, are, are really pulling the load right now, uh, and, uh, it's, it's, it's becoming a little bit.
Because you're missing one of those three right now.
Yes, we're, we're, we're short one, we have two, and they're working forty-eights, forty-eights.
Gee, man.
So, and they have been since April thirtieth, so. Trying to get a match.
But the way you said she answered and you responded to her, I just wanted to make sure we're clear, you're down one of those petty firefighters.
Correct, down one.
When you said that he only has three, no, he only has two.
Oh, but, yeah, fully staffed, we're. But, thank y'all.
Thank you. Got a number up both y'all's departments, guys. Thank y'all for keeping the lid on it. Good deal. Uh, municipal court?
She's rocking and rolling.
Yeah.
Doing what she needs to do. PD's keeping her hopping.
Okay. Hey, one more. Roma? Roma? Your software at the cemetery?
We're in the training process. We've mapped it, we've got the names in it, with the data's in there. All we're doing now is wait, we're just waiting on training.
Wait, waiting on training from the people?
Yeah. We had the schedule with them.
Have we paid them already?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
Well, I don't know, have you paid the last one?
No.
Oh, they are.
But we haven't, it hasn't been drafted yet.
No, the last.
No, we have not, they have not been fully paid.
They have not been officially paid yet.
I, I recommend you don't fully pay them until they're fully through training and everything.
Okay.
Or you will never get them back.
We're finding them.
Are we learning these lessons yet?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's all they want's money, the rest of it's immaterial.
Check.
Okay. We are convening executive session pursuant to section five-five-one dash zero-seven-four of technical government code to liberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duty, dismissal, or dismissal of a public official employee regarding the city manager. All right, we will go at, I'll even keep this on the right clock here, six forty-six. And we won't be there very long. We don't dismiss them, we just aren't asleep. We don't disbar, we're short and sweet.